Praise for the pledge of speech led by Councilmember Carrie Bzinski.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. Before we start tonight, we do have a special recognition, and it is the Wilson Barn Car Show Commendation, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Bzinski, to do the presentation.
Yes. Who do we have with us tonight? I don't...
They're coming.
Oh, they're coming down here. So this is an exciting event if you haven't been to at Wilson Barn. It happens in June. I guess I'll read the commendation while they're coming down. "On behalf of the City of Livonia, Michigan, we are thrilled to recognize your organization for hosting 37 barn shows at Wilson Barn, breaking the record for the most cars displayed at the show. As a charter club of the Michigan Hot Rod Association comprised of club members and volunteers, you have created a strong kinship that continues to grow each year. We are grateful you are part of our community and wish you the best at future events." I've had the pleasure of being a guest judge at the last two events. It's a fun activity to take my kids to. It's an amazing array of events and car owners who are just super enthusiastic about their automobiles, the histories, really just creative displays too. You know, some roadsters will have like clothing and other accessories to share about. So I always enjoy it. I highly encourage folks to attend, and thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely. Yep, if you would my couple...
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, first and foremost, thank you very much for having us. You know, we belong to the Road Knights Auto Club, which was founded in 1951 by eight friends that loved cars. Now, the barn show is a car show that began in 1987, hosted by the Road Knights at the historic Wilson Dairy Barn in Livonia. And the first car show that we had was roughly about 150 cars. Thirty-six years later, the barn show has become a must-see event for hot rodders and Livonia residents alike. We went from 150 cars to, like you mentioned, close to 900 this last year. Truly an amazing show. At the show, you know, we have rows and rows and rows and rows, like, you know, of vehicles, live entertainment, food crafts, swap meet, and then, of course, the awards. And at the heart of the awards is the coveted Road Knight Pick, which is basically the best in show. And it's truly an honor because when you receive Best of Show and you think of you're one of eight or 900 cars that gets chosen for that, you know, your vehicle gets to be the logo for next year's show. So with all the poster and the flyers and even the T-shirts that we have as well. So, you know, truly an honor. For many, it's not just a car show, it's tradition. And it's held once a year, the Sunday before Father's Day. So the next one that we have is going to be June 14th, 2026. So just real quick, yeah, on behalf of the Road Knights, we're truly honored to receive this commendation. What began in 1951 with just eight friends that love hot rodding has grown into a tradition that we are proud to share with the community. We're grateful for Livonia's support over the years and look forward to keeping the spirit of the barn show alive for generations to come. And, you know, with that, it's very easy to kind of talk and describe it. But this year, we actually came up with a commercial that kind of showcases a little bit more, it's more of a visual of what it is. So if you don't mind, I can just go ahead and play that.
For nearly four decades, the Road Knights have hosted this barn show, not just as an event, but as a living, breathing tribute to the spirit of hot rodding. To some folks, it's just a day of engines and ice cream. But to us, it's tradition. It's legacy. It's where grandpas show grandkids how it used to be done, and where horsepower meets heart. So buckle up, folks, because this year, the engines roar louder, the memories run deeper, and the Road Knights have just given start. This isn't just about cars. It's about connection. This is where friendships are forged, and memories stick like grease under your nails. It's a tradition built on chrome, character, and a whole lot of hurt.
Teenagers are building businesses with AI.
That was a wonderful, wonderful video. And now we'll do our photos.
All right, good evening. Welcome to the 2023rd Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, September 8th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Bzinski?
Here.
Councilmember Scheel?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Vice President Taschek?
Here. We have six members present. President McCullough could not be with us tonight. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of the City Council held on August 11th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Morgan, support from Bzinski. Do we have any comments from the audience on the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Bzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Vice President Taschek?
Aye, and the minutes are approved, six nothing. The council has now set aside 30 minutes for audience communication for items not on the agenda. If you would like to address council, please line up at the podiums, and we will start. You will have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Welcome, go ahead.
All right. Good evening. Steve King, Coventry Gardens. See, I played the Wilson Barn Car Show for years, and then lost my gig to the DJ. But at any rate, it's a great show. Couple things from last meeting were pulled off the agenda I wanted to address very quickly. Didn't get a chance to speak to them. Looking for a... using an executive firm to find a new library director. Why would we pay thousands of dollars to a recruitment firm just to hire a new director for Civic Center? That's not just wasteful, it's nonsense. Let's break it down. First, this is a local job, not a national corporate executive. There are qualified, experienced candidates right here in our own library. We don't need to pay a middleman thousands of dollars to find someone with a resume. Second, think about what else that money could do. It could fund hundreds of new books, technology upgrades, children's programming. Third, we already have a city HR department, so why are we double paying? Taxpayers already fund professionals whose job is to handle hiring. This makes it look like either they can't do the job or the city won't let them. Fourth, it sends the wrong message to the community. We're told we can't afford basic things, but suddenly there's money lying around for a recruiting firm that tells our people priorities are upside down. Finally, hiring firms are not magic. They use the same job postings, interviews, and reference checks any good HR team does. You're paying for speed, not better results. So here's the smarter way to do it. Post the job publicly. Use the city's own HR team and communication channels. Engage the library board and community. Conduct interviews and make the hire and save the money for something that actually helps the residents. Secondly, I didn't get a chance to talk about the Rotary Pavilion. So instead of spending nearly a million dollars on a pavilion with attached bathrooms, I propose what I feel is a smarter, more cost-effective alternative. By splitting the project into two standalone components, a self-cleaning smart restroom and a covered pavilion with a fireplace, we can meet the community needs, save money, and improve flexibility. Here's the smart restroom, Urban Blue, $180,000. Roof pavilion, $300,000. Masonry fireplace, $30,000. Solar panels, $40,000. Total, $550,000. Advantages of this proposal: Urban Blue Smart Restrooms are self-cleaning, secure, and vandal-resistant, designed for urban parts. Splitting the project into modular components allows flexible and phased construction. Overall cost is lower than the original plan. The pavilion can be solar-equipped, supporting sustainable goals. Both structures can be tailored to future expansion or upgrades. This is a smarter, more sustainable, and cost-effective way to upgrade Rotary. So let's rethink the monolithic pan and invest in flexible, future-ready infrastructure. I'm going very fast because you only got three minutes. But Carrie, I saw your comments in the Detroit News. You're saying the price isn't going to fall magically. Well, I brought you a little magic tonight.
Thank you. Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Jenny O'Connor. I live on West Chicago in Livonia. I'm one of your current Livonia City Council candidates. So before I get started, I just want to say I hope everybody had a really good first day of school today, including you, Martha. Thank you to all the staff and faculty who worked really hard to get the schools ready for our kids today. So tonight, because this is the last council meeting of August, I want to talk about something that's really near and dear to my heart for the month of September. On September 1st, and I'm going to read this because I might get a little verklempt, "On September 1st, 2022, my family's world changed forever when we lost my dad to suicide." That date has made this month profoundly personal, and it's why I feel called to speak about awareness and prevention. September is recognized nationally as Suicide Prevention Month. I want to highlight the work of a local nonprofit organization called the SPN Survivors. They're doing incredible work here in our community by providing education, advocacy, and outreach to raise awareness and support and prevention. This month also reminds us how important it is to talk openly about mental health. Those conversations, whether with a friend, a neighbor, or a professional, can reduce stigma, open doors to support, and sometimes quite literally save someone's life. In addition, SPN Survivors is launching Kindness Connection Month for the month of September. They're encouraging intentional acts of kindness throughout our community and beyond. Kindness and compassion go hand in hand with mental health, and it's often those small gestures that can make all the difference in the world. I invite everyone to learn more about their efforts. There, spnsurvivors.org, and consider how each of us can play a role in creating a more connected and supportive community. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Christopher Martin, a resident of the great state of Michigan. At the last 7 o'clock council meeting, it was withdrawn off the new business part of that particular agenda, and that was in reference to the search for a new library director. And I was going to speak at that at the last meeting until it was withdrawn. Now, for those out there in TV land and in the viewing audience here, is that in order to go to City Council, it was 25 grand or more, okay, for that search. Well, that was withdrawn. And I feel that was withdrawn because of the recent millage defeat, the mayor's downtown Livonia. And I think that, to be honest, if that kept... if that stayed on the agenda, and people up on council had voted for that, that would have been the kiss of death on their next election campaign. So in referencing that, just like Steve did earlier, is that I don't feel that... and I'm hearing 17,000. That's under the $25,000 threshold, but we shouldn't be spending any money looking for that. And the reason for that is because we have someone who's... that's their job, in my opinion, Ms. Libel up on the third floor there. That's what she should be doing, a job search for that. And so I really find it disappointing that we're still going to waste money on that search. But it was really telling when that 25... at least 25 grand was withdrawn at the last council meeting. And I think that said that some of you weren't interested in voting for that or didn't want people to know too much about what that was... what that money was directed to do. And I see young Mr. Donavick shaking his head. So he'll be able to get the last word in here in a minute, okay, as he's sitting up there smiling, okay? That's just fine. But I do feel, though, that that was... that would have been a tremendous waste of money. And it's not Mr. Donavick's money. It's my money and other taxpayers. So, you know, go ahead and laugh, but I don't find it humorous wasting money like that. So I'm glad that was withdrawn. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to address something that... oh, Jim Bigot, Lake Shore? I'd like to address something that came up during the last election, and that's the whole idea of the trinkets and everything else, all the additional printing and whatnot that went on with the city. As you know, I brought... mentioned that over $33,000 was spent by the city on the Better Built Bond issue. Additionally, it's come up that the... somebody submitted a FOIA request for the information regarding the website, and the city has mentioned it's between somewhere over $35,000 to $40,000 just to get FOIA information. I think it's time that we put a restriction on the city, and maybe an ordinance needs to be enacted to say no more spending on bond issues that are above and beyond the normal running of the city. That if you can't do it inside the city, you shouldn't be spending money, the taxpayers' money, and there should be a limit of $0 to say no more banners, no more signs. You can put it on your website that the city controls, that the city website managers can do. This shouldn't be spending money willy-nilly out there. I mean, how much money went on for the planning for the whole process for downtown... I mean, for the Civic Center area? I mean, there's lots of money that's been said. I'm not going to sure what the final accounting is, but I think we should just put a limit on an ordinance for the trinkets and all the other printing that went on, restricting what goes on with bond and millages. Additionally, I want to say something about the recent effort for the accounting effort. There are a lot of CPAs in the City of Livonia that need work. I think you could have gone out and asked people in the City of Livonia to come in and say, can you do the job, and not gone out and paid, what was it, $175 an hour for somebody else on a contract that you already have with an unnamed major contractor in the Livonia area? And I think that you've kind of are snubbing your nose at small businesses in Livonia that could have come in and helped do the work probably a lot cheaper. And I think you're really not helping out the small businesses in Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Brockway, Melrose Street, Livonia. One of your City Council candidates. I can't make the joke that there are 400 of us anymore, but, you know, I'm one of the eight left. Just to touch on the points made about the $15,000 being used toward a third party for hiring of a library director, I was at the Library Commission meeting where that was brought up. And we do have a very skilled HR department here within the city. I don't see why there's a reason... and I'm not saying anyone here can directly change that that's being put in. It was 15,000. It's not at the purview. But originally in the meeting, we mentioned 25. This one, they said 15 at the Library Commission. Experience in the federal government, I've seen how our HR departments are able to hire people at the executive level, senior executive levels, that you don't have to go to a third party to hire individuals. We have skilled individuals that work within our library. As Steve King had mentioned, we have people that work within the library, within the city. This could be a public job posting, because the ideas that were brought up during the meeting was that the third party utilizes such services as LinkedIn. We all have access to that. They ask questions and interview questions on things that a high-level executive may need to know dealing with library industry. The individuals that work at the library have experience in this stuff. They could create a panel. I've seen it firsthand on the federal level. There's no reason it couldn't work on a civil level or civic level, local level. So just want to point out, it's these little things that kind of irk people where we see this much money being spent, where there's so many residents asking for other things where the money could be allocated. So it's just... wanted to just put it out there. On the federal side, we can do this. We can do more with less. There's no reason our HR department couldn't do this solely, because at the end, the third party is going to make their determination, their recommendation, then it comes back to the city to make a final determination. It's an unnecessary step. We have skilled people already working for the city. So I think we should just let them do their job and cut out the middleman. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Denise Micah, Livonia. Looking at how the library was handled with the... originally, it's taken off the agenda because it was above the threshold, and it didn't want... somebody didn't want it to be seen by supposedly a transparent government here that we couldn't see it, so they lowered the threshold. And what I would like to see is that the threshold for the administration be lowered back to what it was before 2020. I don't know if people know it, but it was a much lower threshold then, and because of COVID, whatever, things were brought up. But I think we need a lot more scrutiny, because in your budget meetings, you say we run a very tight ship, but all of a sudden, there's $15,000. Oh, it was 17, and we're going to switch it, switch it. $33,000 here and there. And they do a piecemeal on credit cards. I think the City Council, who represents the citizens, should do a better job of checking out where the numbers go. And I would fully support it to go to a lower limit. And if you need help, I'd be more than happy to help you go through all these packages, because we're really going to be looking at all the things that are coming to light, what you were going to vote on for expenditures by the administration, because there's a lot of other things we can do with that money. And that's... I bet you we could find that money to rehab all those buildings with a little bit of here, a little bit of there. I mean, everybody in their own budget, they see, oh, if I just cut out my extra coffee here and there. It's amazing how you could add up and get the money of something you really need. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're going to go to council announcements. Ms. Toy.
If I may, excuse me. On a sadder note, I don't know how many of you knew Don DeComo, but Don was one of our architects. Mark would remember Don and several of you. He did tons of stuff for the city. Very generous person, very capable person. Him and Ben Tizio, who's still among us, Ben and him were partners for many years. Linda remembers this as well. Don was just a super guy. He was a member of the Italian-American Club. Him and his wife donated a lot of hours to the Angela Hospice in raising dollars for that when it first started with Sister. And his community activity is unbelievable. He leaves foregrown children. The one I think became an architect, he used to work with Don and Ben at times. Don loved bocce ball and golf. I don't know which order he liked better, but he was quite a jokester, as a lot of Italians are. They like to have fun. I don't mean to categorize all of them, but most of them. And he loved good food, good Italian-American food. So he'll be very, very missed. He was a good friend of Livonia and did just super stuff. I just had the pleasure of working with him, and I know Linda Scheel probably will remember Don as well, and Carolyn. So thank you, Madam Chair. If we could have just a few moments of silence for Don and his family. Amen.
Councilmember Bzinski.
Yes, so I will talk about libraries, but I'll talk about programming. First and foremost, I want to thank our librarians over at the Sandberg Library. Last week, we hosted our first Japanese Storytime. Foreign language storytimes are popular across Master Detroit. And if you didn't know, here in Livonia, we have a Japanese immersion school as part of Livonia Public Schools program. My boys go to that school, so I'm a staunch advocate for it. It's called Njiro Elementary School. And Sandberg Library has really taken up, you know, being a resource for families who go there and creating a Japanese storybook collection, and now this Japanese Storytime program that we're hoping to make more permanent offering in our library system. We had 85 individuals show up for this Storytime. It was one of the largest that we've had, and I'm excited to see it continue. If you didn't know about Njiro, it is a K through 6 elementary school and LPS. You do not need to know Japanese to attend. I certainly don't. But it is a great opportunity for families here in our community. And if you have a kid who's going into kindergarten or will be in the next few years, I highly recommend you check it out. Additionally, starting next month, it's the fifth year for the One City One Book Program. This year's book selection is The All-American by Susie Finkbeiner. Probably not saying that right. If you stop in the library or go online, you can get this little handout here. It lists all sorts of programs that are available for all ages associated with the book. The theme is the 1950s. And since it is Livonia's 75th birthday anniversary year, that is the connection point for our community here. So the programs will be about Livonia's history, and then the 1950s as a whole for kids to learn about the past. So if you're looking for a good book to read, I read it over the weekend. It's good, it's easy, and fast. So, thank you.
Councilmember Scheel.
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank all of the volunteers and everybody that was involved in Touch a Truck at Greenmead this weekend. It was awesome, wonderful. I had my two young grandchildren with me and my husband, and they had a wonderful, wonderful time. So thank you to everybody that was involved with preparing for it or even volunteering that day. It was wonderful. Next, I would like to submit to law for report and recommendation back to council regarding city clerk duties as far as it is... as far as it relates to preparing the agenda for council meetings.
Support.
No, just to refer it to law for report and recommendation.
All right. We have a motion to remove the clerk's office, basically, from the agendas for City Council. Does anyone just make sure I'm getting that right? Supported by Mr. Donavick. Counsel, anyone have comments on that? Anyone from the audience?
Madam Vice President.
Oh, go ahead.
From some conversations with the motion maker, it sounds like this is just to clear up and create some efficiencies for agendas. There's a lot of rules and regulations when you're drafting agendas, and a lot of work that the clerk's office does and City Council Office does, and our council manager, Sarah Casper. So I think they were just looking for some efficiencies here, and look forward to what Law Department comes back with and kind of different creative ideas to make this process a little bit smoother for us as council members and for the people that place agenda items on the agenda. Thanks, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. All right, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, I would also...
We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before... hold that thought. Anyone have any comments on the motion? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bzinski?
Yeah, I did already.
Oh, you did, okay. Councilmember Bzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Vice President Taschek?
Aye, and the motion carries six nothing. Mr. Morgan, go ahead.
Okay. All right. I would also like to refer this item of block parties to the Department of Law. It was recently brought to my attention that the block parties, as they are listed, and people having to come in front of City Council, that may not necessarily be something that is required. And I'd like the Department of Law to take a look into that. Along with that, if the Department of Law... Along with that, if the Department of Law could, if there is a change that could be made. Thank you, thank you. If there is a change that could be made, we would like to make sure that the person is in good standing with the city and maybe make that a form instead of something where they have to come in front of city council.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Morgan regarding block parties and the procedures and everything that goes with it, supported by Mr. Donavick. Counsel, any comments? No. Audience, anyone have comments on block parties regarding this? You have two minutes.
I just find that interesting. It's something I've been talking about, to make it more perfunctory, like when you do a garage sale, you go, you fill out the slip, and that's it, you have your garage sale. And I always thought to make the folks sit through a boring two-hour meeting, to come up and get approval to have a block party, it should be perfunctory. They fill out a slip, and you should be able to list all the block parties. You can do that. You can have it scroll down your screen. These are all the block parties this week, if anybody's interested. But to make them sit through that, I've been talking about that for some time. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Toy, go ahead.
Just speaking from a little bit of history, we used to have people come in, and we still do, because there's a noise ordinance in this community, and people celebrate more at their homes lately because things are expensive. Halls are expensive, and people don't have the wherewithal. We also like to see who's doing block parties and get to meet them and talk to them and/or the neighbors. So there were some reasons for it, quite frankly, as we look at some of the history in the past, whether it's relevant in the future, time will tell, but that's fine. I mean, I don't object at all. I'm just trying to say, these were some of the reasons we kind of looked at things, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Donavick.
Thanks, Madam Vice President. To Councilwoman Toy's comments, it's not necessarily about block parties themselves, more about the noise. And being here for nearly six years now, we've had instances where residents have come and complained and didn't want the noise ordinance to be waived. So it's not about expediting the bond, the, excuse me, the process for those block parties and making them sit through a meeting, it's about understanding what the block party is and understanding that if all their residents want the block party to happen, if they want to waive the noise ordinance. So I understand, I'm not gonna stand in the way of this, I understand trying to create efficiencies and look for creative ways to get work done in our community and kind of get rid of regulations, but I just think there's a two-edged sword here as well, that you may find yourself in a situation where you don't want a block party happening, and it's more difficult for you to reach out to administrative staff at a front desk and have your concerns heard, as opposed to coming before the city council and saying, no, we don't want the block party for X, Y, Z reasons, or no, we don't want the noise ordinance amended or lifted. So I understand your historical knowledge on that. So thanks, Madam Vice President.
We're gonna come back to the audience now.
Vicki Johnson, Livonia. So it's one thing about having a party, but it's another thing about the noise ordinance. We talked before about the church one on Linden. And so this year, maybe it wasn't quite as loud, but if you went outside, it was. So I turned the air conditioning on full blast until 1:00 in the morning, and everything was okay. But anything after 10 o'clock, what is, what is the law? 10 o'clock?
Address here, we'll respond.
10 o'clock, is that, is that the law?
We'll respond in a minute.
Or the ordinance, because going after that, you want to expect to be able to go to sleep. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, did you still have, are you good?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that while the law department is researching this, maybe something could be added into that indicating, you know, noise, if they violate any other ordinances or something to that effect, that that could be withdrawn.
Madam Chair.
Hold on, Mr. Donavick, go ahead.
I would just note, Madam Chair, that, again, oftentimes, the block party requests that we get are asking to waive the noise ordinance because they go past 10 o'clock. Oftentimes, the instances I've experienced is we are asking, we are being asked to waive that noise ordinance more so than we are the block party necessarily. So I'm looking forward to, as Councilman Morgan said, I'm looking forward to see what law department drafts up, and maybe there's some system there that if it doesn't, doesn't need the noise ordinance to be waived, that that can be more of an administrative process, but I imagine this is more complicated. I'm looking at our council manager, and she's giving me the eye. So look forward to see what law department has to say. Thanks, Madam Vice President.
If I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Just real quick, also, safety enters into some of it, believe it or not. You've got people that are homebound now, that are on breathing machines or oxygen machines, and they don't want roads cut off, and we gotta alert those neighbors that there is gonna be a block party. Much like we used to have lot splits, we never put up a sign there to say there's gonna be a lot split. And I don't know if you remember this, Linda, but they'd come in crazy, I mean, you know, which I don't blame them. All of a sudden, there's gonna be this big lot split next to them on a big piece of property, and it really helped, the communication aspect of it. Just like, my street's gonna be cut off, so if you don't want to participate in the block party, you'll know that the street's cut off this day at this time. You know, something as simple as that. We have to take in every consideration as we look at these things. It's just not one quick bullet, and maybe it is on this, but, you know, to just point out the safety aspect, and maybe that's not a good example, but there are examples of that where we had problems in the past as well. Thank you, Madam Chair, I won't beat the dead horse.
Just a reminder, the motion is not to actually change anything, it's just to refer to law order for possible ordinance change.
For possible, yep. Thanks.
Welcome.
Hi, Michelle Mancini, Merriman Road. I think it's a great idea to come up with a better plan instead of having them come here. One of the things, if it's gonna go to law, just an idea, is maybe you could put a requirement for the application, that they have, you know, a minimum of 50% of the neighborhood that sign, you know, the application for it, or, you know, some number so that it's not just, and I don't know how it works right now, but just a number where people are acknowledging that in that neighborhood, they would like to do this. And I would, again, I've never had a block party, I live on Merriman, so probably couldn't do that. But I was, I would assume that they go through, like, traffic, right? Like, and the police have to sign off on it as well, so maybe that's all just part of the process that they could add.
Thank you. All right, counsel, everyone good?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We do have a motion on the floor right now. Madam Clerk, could you go ahead and take the vote?
Councilmember Bzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shields.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye, and it will be referred to law and or law for review, passes six nothing. Back to council communication. Mr. Donavick.
Thanks, Madam Vice President. I wanted to wish a special happy birthday to a friend of mine, Juliana. Juliana's fourth birthday. I'm friends with her parents, Brandon and Maria, and sometimes she watches Livonia City Council meetings. So happy big fourth birthday party, Juliana, it was a blast. Wasn't able to make last council meeting, I was on vacation with my family, but I was watching, and it was, the YouTube feed was working great. So if anybody was wondering, that was nice to kind of watch along and follow the council meeting virtually. And I wanted to let the community know that there was a lot of discussion about the Rotary Pavilion, and I think everybody naturally was shocked to hear those numbers. We are gonna be holding a committee meeting, Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting will be held September 15th, Monday, September 15th at 7:00 PM on the second floor, and we will be talking about that pavilion. And unfortunately, the reality is the construction, I know people have ideas of, you know, what they can do with construction, but the reality is, the marketplace determines the prices, and there was, what, eight, nine bidders that came back between the, between the range of 800,000 and 1. some odd million dollars, and that's just the reality of, everybody wants to be paid more, insurance costs more, we want higher wages and benefits for employees, and, you know, better cost of living and all those sorts of things. So naturally, prices of construction or replacement are going up unfortunately. So be an interesting meeting to hear from Parks and Rec and some of the things we, as council members, can ask questions, and hopefully, there's a good audience attendance. So that'll be Monday, September 15th at 7:00 PM. Thanks, Madam Vice President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from council? Mr. Morgan, go ahead.
Yeah, one last thing before we move on here. I just wanted to congratulate Rob Donavick on his engagement to his soon-to-be beautiful wife.
What'd she say, yes?
She thought about it for a minute. I gave her two minutes.
I gave her two minutes. She timed her.
That's my dad joke for the night.
It's a good one.
That was, I'm not a dad yet, okay? Just making it clear.
It's against the law.
I do believe this is the first time I've seen Mr. Donavick blush. Anyway.
Yes.
Are you all set, Mr. Morgan?
I am, thank you.
He made him blush.
Just a couple other things. He's not with us tonight, but our president, Brandon McCullough, has his birthday this week on Thursday, August 28th, so we wish him happy birthday, and we'll see him next week, I'm sure. And yes, I was also going to mention that Mr. Donavick is off the market, ladies. Definitely outkicked his coverage, but I wish you and Liz the very best, so.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, we're moving on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. We have a communication from the Office of the City Clerk dated August 12th, 2025, regarding the city primary election statistics. I believe this can just be a receive and file for us. We also have a communication from the Department of Finance dated July 24th, 2025. This is forwarding of the quarterly investment report for the city of Livonia for the quarter ending May 31st, 2025, also suggesting that we just take this as a receive and place on file for us. And then another communication from the Department of Finance dated August 5th, 2025, forwarding the departmental purchases report for the month ending July 31st, 2025. And once again, this would be a receive and file. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. Items 1 through 10 on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on August 11th, 2025, and they were determined to be non-controversial. Counsel.
Sobu, support.
Motion by Toy, support by Bzinski. Do I have any comments from the audience on anything on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Bzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shields.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye. The vote passes six nothing, and the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to unfinished business. We've had quite a few committee meetings that need to be reported out. So we're gonna start with agenda item number 11. This would be the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting of July 9th, 2025.
Madam President, can we table that to a future meeting? Don't have the notes ready yet, thank you.
Okay, so that one we will hold off on. Agenda item number 12, this is Finance and Budget Committee Meeting of August 11th, 2025. This one is mine, so I will give an overview of this. This was the subject matter of the advanced budget reviews fiscal year for the 2025-26 pre-budget meeting. This was held August 11th, 2025, in the City Hall Council Chambers. The committee members that were present, or me, I'm the committee chair, Councilmember Shields is our committee vice chair. Mr. Donavick was not there because clearly he was off getting engaged that day. But other city officials present, we had our council president, Brandon McCullough, Carrie Bzinski, council member, council member Laura Toy, our city attorney, Carter Fisher, our finance director, Debbie Lichtenberg, our chief accountant, Connie Complah, Dave Varga, the mayor's chief of staff, and our city clerk, Lori Miller. We also had quite a huge audience of residents there as well. The meeting convened at 6:00. I opened the meeting with an explanation of the budgeting process and the purpose of the pre-budget meeting. Our finance director then gave an overview of the timeline and process. Property taxes were up 4% from the previous year, they were expected to be up 6%. Our general revenue was basically flat at a 2.2% increase. The city's major cost is staffing and personnel. Our 2026 budget is not expected to add any positions at this time. Capitol Outlay requests are expected to exceed our 2025 levels. Council members were then given the opportunity to state their priorities, concerns, and ask questions. And I kicked it off with the following statement. We need to be very aggressive in cost savings going into this budget. Every dollar must be assigned to purpose, whether it is for needs, wants, savings, or debt payment. We are no longer just looking at a previous year and adding a small percentage. We're going to need to look at every expense to ensure it is still necessary and aligned with our current priorities. My priorities were that the $2.4 million that was set aside for the City Hall project maybe be directed to the CIP or 418 Fund, that the capital's facility manager position should remain in our budget, and the hiring be a priority as we head into this next fiscal year, and that the admin fee that is being charged to commercial properties and the PRDA be rescinded. It was to purchase the property for the senior center and should not continue going forward. Financials on the senior center project and courthouse were also requested before the preliminary budget meeting. Looking at changing the fee structure was suggested, since the court should not be supplemented by the general fund, and the building and ordinance department was asked if more money should be allocated for increased inspection and what is needed as far as to support them. I've been meeting with the director, and we're gonna work on some solutions with those fine structures. The city's looking into some technology and software enhancements for inspection, and our inspection director, Jerome Hannah, will be asked to share exactly what he's gonna need as we get closer to finalizing the budget. I also asked for a usage study for Bennett and Sandberg. We need real data on the traffic, usage and staffing, and this will allow us to make some informed and responsible decisions regarding cuts and consolidation of library services. Vice Chair Linda Shields shared her priorities. She also wanted the status of the capital improvement director, wanted to know the amount of money that was spent on the municipal facilities, millage, a balance sheet was requested, have all contracts in place in order to stop work, and if so, what was the date? The amount of money spent on the new city hall project to date, the current financials of the city center, discussion regarding the inspection department losing money and what can be done to help them while trying not to increase fees on residents. What are we looking at imposing additional fees on empty buildings, possibly being able to increase fees for those staying empty for an extended period? Also asked about the current financials of the courthouse, the balance of the funds in our 418 or building account, and any department that administration can suggest downsizing, consolidating, or eliminating completely. And there were concerns raised regarding the clerk's office, the communications department, the government affairs liaison department, and the mayor's office. Also asking for the .5 mil for businesses only to be removed effective November 30th of this year. Also requested was an updated list of city-owned buildings and vacant land, not utilized parks, an updated list of car assignments and car allowances, how much to specific job titles and how decided, a list of grants received over the two years, not including police and fire, millage wording for the two millages that expire in 2026, and where can the millage wording be found for all other city millages that are part of our tax bill? Also looking for a balance sheet of PRDA funding, what city positions do the council have control of salary besides our own, and opposition to spending money on a salary survey. Then Councilmember Carrie Bzinski shared her priorities, which were ensuring that the city has funds to address obligations to staff and retirees, also filling the capital improvement manager role, moving forward with the library's deferred plans, the new roof, bathroom conversion, et cetera, the Hillcrest Park improvements that are needed, making sure inspection and enforcement have the resources necessary to address ordinance violations, and creation of an economic development position that could be shared part-time with the PRDA. A citywide salary survey, exploring the possibility of college partnerships for, like, intern-type programs, and a memo with financials related to the building, recent investments, building maintenance costs, current preservation costs, et cetera. Councilmember Toy then asked about usage and access to city cars and usage of city land, and then President McCullough requested the salary survey, a five-year comprehensive CIP plan, a property maintenance ordinance investment, strengthened investment in both residential and commercial property maintenance enforcement, and a strategic plan regarding Sandberg and Noble renovations. The meeting closed with acknowledgement that not all of these requests and questions are part of the finance department's responsibilities or the budget process, but are still priorities for the council. The finance director thanked everyone for their input and gave some closing remarks regarding how the budget process will proceed. The meeting adjourned at 6:46 PM. The subject matter will remain in committee as a standing item. We did recommend that the September 18th Finance and Budget Committee meeting will be held at DPW instead of the fifth-floor gallery. And to receive and place on file for the information of the council, the city of Livonia 2025 assessment data booklet from the city assessor, which was dated July 28th, 2025.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Donavich.
I just, I was not at the meeting again, I was out of town, but I just wanted to commend you. For people that don't know, the finance chair does a lot of work behind the scenes that are non-paid hours, and there's a lot of work that goes on with the department heads, and specifically the finance department. And you really are the perfect person for the job. I got to serve under Scott Barr, which was a financial genius. And he spent a lot of time and energy on these finance meetings. And you are a math wizard, a math teacher, so you fit the role well. But for all the people that don't know, you know, that position does a lot of work. Meetings, on top of meetings, on top of meetings, on top of your full-time job, and you take that role very seriously by your minutes. And I wish I could have been there, and just well done to you and the entire finance committee. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our next, we have the Law and Education Committee meeting of August 18th, 2025.
So the Law and Education Committee meeting met that night at 6 o'clock in council chambers. Committee members present were myself, Laura Toy, who is vice chair, Martha Tashnik, who is also a member, and also Carrie Buzinski. And from administration, we had Carter Fisher, our city attorney, and Jerome Hannah, our inspection director. At that meeting, we, email was received late that, well, actually during the meeting that I received it from Mr. Steve Johnson, and that email will be forwarded to the law department. There was some discussion, but a motion was made by council vice president Martha Tashnik for the subject matter to remain in committee. And that concluded that meeting. The next item on our agenda was the subject matter of a potential ordinance amendment related to cloth coverings on fences. The same people attended, but I also should mention that there were seven citizens, seven residents that were at the meeting also. A motion was made by council vice president Martha Tashnik for the subject matter to be removed from committee. And after discussion, there was a suggestion that any residents that have concerns regarding this, they do have the ability to go to our zoning board of appeals for a variance in order to have a covering on their funds. And this meeting adjourned at 6:15 PM. And that's it.
Thank you. All right, moving on then. The agenda item 14 is the Economic Development Strategic Planning and Technology Committee meeting of August 18th, 2025. Councilmember Buzinski.
Yes, so we held the Economic Development and Strategic Planning Committee meeting related to the subject of Alfred Noble Building on August 18th. We held this meeting on the fifth floor, and that was a learning lesson for me. We had a large turnout, about 45 people attended that meeting. I knew that our council office wouldn't be large enough to accommodate that, or it would have been a very tight squeeze. And I felt that coming down here would make it a bit more impersonal. However, we have microphones down here, so that was the better option, I know for next time. I was present at the meeting, as was committee member, Councilwoman Scheel. City officials present were council president Brandon McCullough, vice president Martha Tashnik, mayor Maureen Brosnan, city attorney Carter Fisher, finance director Deborah Lichtenberg, and government affairs director Rob Drizwicki.
I was there.
Oh, you were there, Laura. You know, we're going to edit that.
It's okay.
Councilwoman Laura Toy. My apologies, Laura.
It's all right, it's all right.
Okay, so the meeting began at 7 o'clock, and I made opening remarks. Just with quick background on Noble, it is in three committees. The committee of the whole for the topic of Noble and Sheldon, the capital outlay infrastructure committee related to facility condition, and then the Economic Development Committee for discussions on future use. It was noted that audience members would be allowed two minutes to speak on the topic as well. The mayor made opening remarks reaffirming the pledge to talk about Noble after the primary election and create space for a community-led strategy. She noted the limited funding for the building, but offered that entities, including the Save Alfred Noble nonprofit, Plymouth Road Development Authority, Livonia Chamber, neighborhood associations, including Old Rosedale Gardens, can come together to find a future use for the site. She noted the possibility of a public-private partnership that would not sell the land, but would offer community benefit. I introduced the proposed Noble task force. The task force can be created by the administration without outside approval and would be a seven-member body overseen by the mayor's office, include voices from the community, specifically the Save Alfred Noble nonprofit. This body would have three key roles. The ability to fundraise and apply for grants for the Noble site. Support to host community events, to create gathering space and activate the property as an amenity for the community in its current conditions. Serve as a recommending body to the administration in the review of proposals for future development for the Noble site. I noted that the task force was designed to address concerns brought forward by residents in the past, including the ability to fundraise and apply for grants, activate the vacant space to the benefit of the neighborhood, and help direct future use for the site that folks have been advocating for, for a long time. Regarding future use, I then referred to our finance director, Deborah Lichtenberg, to explain the request for qualification process. As a means for finding a partner for our public-private development, Ms. Lichtenberg explained that the city currently has access to thousands of vendors via Mitten and can submit for an RFQ that would outline desired use and available space to allow vendors to submit proposals by a deadline that would be reviewed at no commitment by the city. Councilmember Scheel asked a series of questions. First, has there been any interest in the building? Mayor Brosnan shared that there had been a discussion with a local investor who has created community reuse of old buildings before, but was not interested in this project. She asked, would the task force fall under the Open Meetings Act? I stated that the meetings would be public. Would members be paid? This, I shared that it would be a volunteer position. And outside of payment received by staff involved in the task force, there would be no special payment for involvement. It was asked if there was a timeline for the task force, and it was shared that the goal is to form the task force quickly. And for the RFQ process, that timeline is 30 to 60 days from once it's submitted and mitten. And then finally, what were the costs related to the RFQ? And Ms. Lichtenberg explained that the cost for an RFQ would be just the time developed for specifications for the proposal. President McCullough made remarks on the proposal. Vice President Tashnik made a motion for a report and recommendation from the administration on pursuing an RFQ for Noble. The audience was given an opportunity to speak, and about 16 residents spoke on a regard, a variety of aspects, including, but not limiting to, offering assistance, concerns with the task force size and ideas for future use. President McCullough asked that all three remaining council members be appointed to the task force and made a series of motions. The meeting adjourned at 8:10 with one of the motions for the administration to make a report and recommendation to pursue an RFQ for the Noble site, and for the administration to include a number of building upgrades, including positive grade to the foundation, cut gutters, roof drains, including downspouts, clean gutters, remove debris, patch holes, and prevent water reentry. This item does remain in committee.
Madam President.
Mr. Donavich.
I'd like to make a motion to request a report and recommendation from the administration for an RFQ or a request for qualification for Noble.
Your support.
Motion by Donavich, support by Buzinski.
Madam President. Thank you to my colleague, Councilman Buzinski. As everyone knows, at Watch's meetings, I've been a proponent for many years now for the demolition of Noble, more so now than ever with the fact that the city doesn't collect more property taxes than our expenditures, right? We have savings accounts for buildings, but the city is very fiscally responsible and doesn't collect exorbitant amounts of money. We have a small general fund, we have broken up millages that fund specific items. We're unique. Other communities have large general funds, providing them a lot of flexibility. They can do whatever they want with the money. The city of Livonia is very intentional with our dollars, which is good for fiscally responsible decision-making. However, it ties your hands to what you can spend those dollars on. So the city has, as we all know, a lot of critical infrastructure needs that we are not meeting right now. So how can we spend dollars, taxpayer dollars, on auxiliary buildings that we do not need? But I'm willing to have that conversation. I know the council's been doing this for years, and I believe in the commitment of Councilman Buzinski and the mayor's office in doing this task force and seeing what comes from it. And also the RFQ, we're not spending money. We are, we have staff that are doing things and taking time and hours there. But nonetheless, let's see what the task force comes up with. And I believe it will come up with the inevitable, but I'm going to be open-minded here and see what happens. But again, for the residents and people watching, the city doesn't just have troughs of money that we can just spend on whatever we want. You know, from my perspective, if all of our critical infrastructure needs were already funded and no issues there, then we could have discussions. But first things first is take care of our critical buildings that the city needs to operate. But I'm looking forward to this. Thanks, Madam President.
Madam President.
Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam President. What I'd love to see with this committee, and thank you for all your work, Carrie and others, is some kind of timeline. I mean, we just, we keep pushing it this way and that way and every which way. And, you know, I think it's fairness to us, to the city, to the residents that, above the site, that have worked hard on that site, you know, whether it's plantings or, you know, whatever. I mean, it just, it just comes a time when we have to take a hard look at this. And maybe if we had hired that facilities director back when, when Kritzman was on, and made that great suggestion in a budget meeting. I don't know whatever happened, although we're looking at it now, and maybe it was dollars and cents at the time. But we're also looking at buildings and property with what Vice President Tashnik had in her committee, which I think is a very wise move, you know, as we explore these kinds of things. But I think we really need to, you know, look at, do we take the next month or two months or three weeks, or whatever the case may be, whatever the council deems necessary. I'd like to see it come to fruition before I leave in December. It would be a nice Christmas gift and birthday gift at the same time. So, you know, in all seriousness, I just think it's time has come that we really got to get our arms around this thing. We were supposed to, I thought, you know, get an engineer involved and a few other people, and maybe that's coming out of committee of the whole, because I think it's still in committee of the whole, if I'm not mistaken. So there's some more ground to plow, I guess, Madam Chair is what I'm seeing, but I also like to see some time certain on it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Buzinski.
Yeah, so just to clarify a couple of things. One, thank you to my colleague, Councilman Donavich, for putting forward the motion and support. As stated, the RFQ doesn't have associated costs. We already pay to be able to submit items to the Mitten, where people will then be able to submit proposals for review. As for a timeline, this task force can be created through the administration. You know, I wish that it could be resolved in a couple of months, and, you know, if it had started, you know, a couple of years ago, maybe we could have been rounding that finish line. But this is a starting point, and I think we need to give the members of the task force, who is going to be community-based, you know, while there'll be seven people on the task force in official capacity, it's going to require a lot of work from the community and those who want to save this building, to be involved and find a solution to how can we do this? Because, you know, as it was noted, we do have limited city resources. And those resources are going to have to be focused on the buildings that are currently open and being used. I feel that the benefit of this task force is that it doesn't have a cost to the city, but it provides residents who are passionate about this building and this space an opportunity at the table or in the room to find solutions, to find creative, workable solutions that provide a long-term, fiscally responsible path forward for Noble. That is my hope, that's what I will work hard for with the committee. And I thank my colleagues again for giving me the opportunity to do that, and the administration for supporting as well.
Just real quick, and then we'll go to the audience. And you can correct me, the RFQ, just to kind of answer your question. They are typically limited to 30 days, they could go up to 60 days.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So there is, once it's ready to go and post, it will be on a timeline.
Okay, good.
At this point, we'll go to audience communication. Welcome.
Thank you, Christopher Martin, Grove State in Michigan. This is 20 years ago that, when I ran for city council. And one of the questions back 20 years ago was, do we need three libraries? And how can we maintain three libraries? That was 20 years ago. Now Laura Toy is saying, well, you know, if you would have done this a little bit sooner or whatever. 20 years, now we're setting, we're going to have another discussion or committees or whatever, okay? And the amount of money that's been spent on some of these, okay? When really, the hours are very limited on these libraries because little Johnny doesn't ride his bike to the library, okay? There are, over at Sandberg there, you know, there's the usual crowd, but usually there's more workers than there is residents that come in and use it. And so that discussion was 20 years ago, people. Do we need three libraries? Okay? 20 years ago.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Cindy Fleming, Livonia. I would just like to say, please give this process a chance. We just got this task force seated. We can't change the past. All we want to do is move forward. There is a huge number of the public in Livonia and outside of Livonia that would love to save this mid-century modern building and have it be for the benefit of the citizens and community of Livonia. So please let the task force be seated and at least meet once before we start putting out RFQs. Could we even have a discussion about the engineering study that the mayor finally approved, that the city council unanimously voted for the $20,000? In addition, there were $5,000 to be put forward that has never been allocated to secure the building. Please, please, start leading with integrity and honesty. You voted unanimously in 2024. The mayor finally, after a huge amount of public pressure, allowed this to go forward. Please let us help you save the Alfred Noble Library.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to speak on behalf of Alfred Noble Library, a building of architectural and cultural importance, designed by the world-renowned architect Gunnar Burkitts. Yet despite its pedigree and its potential, this landmark has been shamefully neglected by the current administration, decommissioned as a library and left to rot. It now stands as a symbol not of Livonia's pride, but of Livonia's failure to steward its assets. This does not have to be its fate. The Noble Library can be reborn with vision, passion, and commitment. It can become an art center, a teen center, a community gathering place, and even house resources for first responders in that part of the city. It can be restored to its rightful role, not as an abandoned relic, but as a living, breathing heart of the community. The people of Livonia have not given up. A passionate and determined group of residents, the Noble Warriors, have already formed a 501(c)(3) to take up this cause. At a recent council meeting, the one that Carrie's talking about, a number of prominent, intelligent, and talented citizens stood up and volunteered their skills and their time. They pledged to help secure grants, raise funds, and contribute the expertise necessary to bring this building back to life. This is not idle talk. This is action, ready to begin. Let us be clear. The current administration has squandered its authority on this issue. It has lost the privilege to dictate the future of this building. The right thing for the city leadership to do now is simple. Step aside, move out of the way so that the residents, the people with the vision, the energy, and the commitment can begin the work. The Alfred Noble Library is not just another building, it is an architectural treasure. It is a community asset. It is a chance for Livonia to show what can be done when people rally together to save something of value.
Nope.
By the way, applause is free speech.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jim Bigga, Lancashire Road. One thing that Carrie mentioned was grants. You know, the city has not been very good at getting grants. There's a lot of grants out there across the country, a lot of organizations that do grants, that provide grants. Doesn't necessarily mean the city's got to put all the money for this. We could be looking at grants and getting the grants to do the work. You've got a 501(c)(3) that wants to do work. You've got citizens that want to do work. The city obviously doesn't want to do a lot with this building, but the community wants to do a lot with the building. And if the community wants to help take care of the building and do things with it, maybe... community wants to help take care of the building and do things with it, maybe the time is for the city to say, hey, we'll let you guys run it, and you guys take care of it, and we'll just have it listed as a City of Livonia property. And if you guys don't take care of it, and you can't do the work, then maybe we need to look at what the options are. But let's let the city residents figure out, along with the city, how the best way to go ahead and do this. Don't rush it, and don't sit there and say, let's tear it down tomorrow. Let's let the people who want to do the work and try to raise the funds to do it, have the opportunity to do it. There's a lot of wealthy people in this area. I mean, you've got a guy who gave you $100,000 and is building this nice little automotive warehouse down there, and there's another family that has an automotive warehouse right next to them, and you've got another family down the street that's got an automotive warehouse. I'm sure the LaFontaines, the Feldmans, and Penske's might want to help make sure Livonia has a nice little community center that they all can put their names on. I mean, come on, let's think outside the box. Why does everything have to say "City of Livonia" and have our logo on? Why can't we have other logos? There's nothing wrong with that. Other cities do it.
Denise Michael, Livonia. I'm frustrated that we, as a community, are waiting to hear it's up to the administration. You're supposed to be working together. Where are the timelines? Anytime you have a project, you get something. Let's get the milestones here. Let's get, okay, we would have loved to hear that, at that meeting, within two weeks, we'll have the task force developed. We're going to do this, we're going to do that. There is no structure to this. We've been waiting. Well, I hear this from 24. We're waiting. You're the checks and balances. When are you going to do the check on the administration? The only checks we see are the ones that you let them just write the things away under the table. And it's, let's have some transparency in the government and enforce that. You are representing the people, too. We expect you to stand up for us and do this, and not say, we're just waiting for the administration. That's how frustrated we are on a lot of things, when it comes to the budget, everything. We shouldn't be spending money on this or that. And then, we have enough technology to put the RFQ out, but we don't have enough technology to hire the library person with our people that we pay their salaries. It's just hysterical that you can't see how that just doesn't make sense to us, and that's why we're all frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Greetings, everyone.
Good evening.
James Hooper, Six Mile Road. Two questions that I have, Madam Chair. First, in regards to a question brought up by Linda Scheel at the Finance and Budget Meeting regarding the language for-
We've got to stay on the topic, the motion that's on. We're-
This is all part of this-
The economic development for Noble.
There was no, there was no audience communication for this point?
We went to, and no one came up.
There was no motion.
There was no motion. We're on a motion right now.
All right. Then let me address Noble.
You can speak at the end, I mean, if you have something off agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Regarding Noble, to be quite frank, we need a fresh set of eyes on Noble. With all due respect to all of the seated members here on council, there was a big failure on the millage. You guys really misread things on the public on that. This is a time for a referendum. You have eight candidates for city council with fresh ideas and fresh eyes to choose from, that the public, the residents have the opportunity to choose from. Several of them, myself included, are advocates for Noble Library. I would suggest to you that anyone who pushes to demolish Noble Library before all measures are exhausted will face the wrath of the public, meaning you'll never have a peaceful meeting in here again. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we do have a motion on the floor, but I am going to go to Mrs. Buzinski first.
I do want to just address some of the comments that have been made. The motion on the floor is for an RFQ to go forward, for a report and recommendation. It is not to say that we are submitting an RFQ. It is the first step in that process. It will be part of what the task force works on, you know, with that. The task force needs to have its members appointed and officially established. I am hopeful that that will be done, you know, within a month. That is, in the month of September, that is the goal that I am working on with the administration, to do this. I have been passionate about the Noble Building for the reasons noted, that I worked at the library in high school. I understood the three library question, and that it wasn't being addressed, and that frustrated me. As an adult, it frustrated me. And so, I've been an advocate for reaching a decision about how we are going to address this city asset for a very long time. And everyone here knows that. The administration knows that. It's something that I bring up a lot, and that is why we reached this point of a task force, where I was able to sit down with the mayor, and we came up with this strategy that would empower residents to have the ability to fundraise, you know, to apply for grants, all the things that residents have said that they've wanted to be able to do. That is the purpose of the task force, and it is just getting started. It hasn't even started yet, not officially. So, it is, it is going to take some time to get people in a room, to evaluate what resources are available, and figure out where we stand. You know, we're not going to have an answer overnight, and I think, you know, my colleagues do understand that. And so, I think if we all just allow the time for this process to start, that then we will be able to see progress moving forward, and end the establishment of milestones, so that we can have metrics of success. But I think it'll be up for the task force, you know, to help guide, you know, what is the direction that it wants to go in. As an individual who expects to be on that task force, I'm not going to make that statement as an individual. You know, it's going to be a group effort. So, I hope people just have some patience and allow this process to play out. Again, I know we've waited a long time for this process to play out, but I think that this is different. This is not what we've done before, and that is what I am proud of and looking forward to seeing through. And again, with, thanks to my colleagues.
Madam Chair. Councilmember Toye.
If I may, how does one, since there is all this community interest and involvement, how does one apply for this task force? Do we know that even, to know if, I don't want to serve on it. I'm just saying, if somebody would like to serve out of the audience or at home, how did they best do? Should they call the mayor's office? Should they call you? Should they call the council office? Should they call DPW?
I'm going to defer to Councilmember Buzinski. Go ahead.
Um, the task force is, will be appointed by the mayor. If those who are-
There you go.
There are designated positions for four of the positions. One is for the Save Alfred Noble Nonprofit Board. They will get to decide who they want officially to represent them on the task force. Again, that is not to say that the work being done by the task force is limited to seven people, but it is, you need to have an official body. The Plymouth Road Development Authority will also have a role to play, as they have resources that can be utilized, you know, along Plymouth Road, that hopefully could be helpful in finding a path forward. Council, the administration, and then three others. If you are interested, you can feel free to email me directly, or email the mayor's office, you know, interest. I have no decision-making. I just, as a constituent service, I would happily, you know, take that information and provide it to our Government Affairs Director, Rob Dreswicki. You could contact him directly as well. That, again, appointment will be for the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Donovan, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Vice President, and I know there's a motion on the floor, so I'll be brief. But ultimately, this task force that we're speaking of, that's just a recommending body that has no authority or power whatsoever. Ultimately, that power vests with the mayor, who is the executive of the city. So, the city council can't, we refer items to the mayor's office, but it's the mayor's administration that has to act upon these items and bring it back before the council. So, we don't have the authority to go out for RFPs. We ask the administration to do so, what we're doing here, if it passes. But then, the administration has to act on that. And this board, they were discussing task force, rather, again, they just, they can meet and talk amongst themselves, and the mayor ultimately has authority who would be on this task force, so to speak. But if there's a motion at the next council meeting to demo Noble, that motion would supersede any task force or whatnot. But the reason why I'm supportive of this tonight, and I'm not a big fan of this motion by any means, myself and Councilwoman Buzinski have had a lot of discussions about it, but I understand her willingness to try to look outside the box. Ultimately, again, the city, we just saw it costs $800,000 plus to build a pavilion. I can only imagine what it's going to cost, it's tens of millions to renovate a 14,000 or so square foot building. We've had all sorts of information and engineering studies. To Councilwoman Toye's point, we've been talking about this building forever, but I understand it sounds at the purview of the council that they'd like to move forward with this RFQ, and yet again, see what happens. I wish it was decided. While I'm on council, but it doesn't sound like this will be done fast, just because, again, bodies are in a talk and have a lot of conversations. But, yeah, this board does not have authority to do anything other than recommend to the council and administration and moving forward. It's only our authority, what we determine with that after that. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilmember Morgan first, please.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have to remind this council that, you know, I'm coming up on my four years of being on this council, and, you know, we've talked about this Noble Library endlessly. We've made recommendations to the administration. We've thrown money at it. We've done all kinds of things that we could do to either figure out if we can save the library, or if it needs to be demolished. This is an endless conversation, and this is the point where government does nothing. We talk about it and talk about it until we're blue in the face, and still, nothing gets done. It ultimately relies on the mayor to take action. We gave them money, they did nothing. We've made recommendations, they've done nothing. And still, here, four years later, it sits there, and nothing has been done. There hasn't been any decisions to either repair it or demolish it. So, and this RFQ that you're requesting, I am not going to be in favor of it, because this is just another kicking the can down the road. It's a waste of time. I can't remember exactly how long ago was it, but we voted on getting rid of it, and that didn't go through. We voted on having it kept up to the standards. That still didn't happen. This is a complete waste of time. That is how, that's my feeling, and I am not going to be in favor of this. The administration needs to do something, either make a decision, and this is to the administration, either make a decision, demolish it or repair it. Give us something to work with. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good day, Madam Chair, or Vice Chair, or Chair tonight. Again, I feel your frustration, Scott, or Councilman. It is frustrating. I mean, you look at us and say, you're the decision-makers of this town. I know that Carrie's worked hard with the mayor and others to try and get even to this point. I'm not sure it's a waste at this time. That's why I was asking, maybe who would be on the task force. And I just, no offense, I don't want to see it stacked with people that may not care about Noble or may care about Noble. I mean, you need that balance, okay? And I think the resident, it behooves you to collaborate together. Those of you, my God, some real talented people stood up the last week or the week before to say, we'll help, you know? And, I mean, God bless you for doing that. I mean, I know Jenny, you were one. Mr. Bigga, Jim, you were one. And forgive me for calling out names, but, you know, and if you don't get picked for that task force or chosen, because it is limited, let's make sure you get together. I used to do that all the time. If I didn't get picked, or I really felt strongly about something, we got groups together, and we discussed it, and then we, you know, shared it with that group that was in charge. So, don't feel like you're being left out. You know what I'm saying? Get together. Let's move this along so that we get an answer, as Mr. Morgan has said, because we're all, we're all, you know, care about this whole thing, but we want to, we want to get it going. Rob, you know, he's getting married, and he wants to have a wedding gift on this one. So, in all seriousness, no, really, I mean, December's coming, we'll be gone, and it would be nice to see the conclusion of this, because everybody's worked real hard on this council. I know that as well. So, thank you, Madam Chair, for the indulgence on that. Thanks.
You guys can, okay. So, we do have a motion on the floor. We are going to take a vote in just a second. A couple of things that did come up, the engineering study, that is in our committee of the whole, for the resident that asked about that. That is President McCullough's committee, and he needs to get that scheduled before we can meet on that. The task force also would be subject to the Open Meetings Act, so even if you are not one of the seven that was selected to be on the task force, per se, you would still be more than welcome to attend the meetings and be part of it, just like you are here tonight. And also, I know there's been a lot of talk, like, why isn't council doing anything? According to the charter, we have to follow certain rules. We have a mayor-led government, she's the executive, versus, and we have the council, and we have to follow certain rules on that. So, that's why we have to do things the way we have to do them sometimes, whether we want to or not. So, we do have a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye, and the motion carries 5-1. All right, let's move on to our unfinished business. We're going to start with agenda item number 15. This is a roll call. It was a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances, as amended from the Department of Law, to Title 12, Chapter 18. This is the naming of public places and buildings, Section 020, to name the new senior facility as the Livonia Senior Wellness Center. Our first reading was given by Councilmember Linda Scheel on August 11, 2025. Councilmember Scheel.
I'd like to offer second reading and a roll call vote, please.
Support.
Motion by Scheel, support by Buzinski. Counsel? Does anyone from the audience?
Christopher Martin, just a quick question here. The name here, Livonia, as far as the wellness, that's a key term, I believe. Was it indeed named that because we got some type of COVID money or whatever, and wellness had to be associated with seniors? Was that the issue with that? Because I was told that by several people, that that's why it acquired the name that it has currently. Is that the way it was?
I believe so.
Councilmember Scheel, go ahead.
I believe so, that that's why, instead of just Livonia Senior Center, it's the Livonia Senior Wellness Center.
Yeah, I would take that as a yes. But as far as naming other buildings, which is part of this also, and this goes back a number of years ago. When they first named the courthouse over there, and they stuck the McCann name on it, I was the only one that voted, that stood at this podium and talked against that. I'm not in favor of putting people's names on buildings, and I liked, really liked Bob Bennett, okay? So, I have no issue with Bob. But to build a building simply to make sure that your family name gets on it, I was against that, okay? And paid a heavy price every time I went to court, until I finally had her disqualified, okay, from hearing any more of my cases, when they got me in on stuff. So, anyway, not in favor, this has to work this way, only due to the fact that we get, we got the money to, from the government to do this. But as far as putting people's names on buildings, this is the Joblow Building or whatever, okay? My suggestion at the time was, be like Donald Trump. Build something, put your name on it, you own it, that's perfect, okay? But not use taxpayers' money to build a building, so you can enhance your family name.
That is your time, but thank you.
Thank you.
And fortunately, there's probably no one named Senior Wellness, so you're okay, Mr. Morgan. All right, seeing no other communication, Madam Clerk, can you please take the vote?
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye, and the motion passes six nothing. We're going to move on to item number sixteen. This is a block party brought to us by Wendy Stone to be held Saturday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty five, from six P M. to ten P M. within the cul-de-sac of Bolmaral Court with a rain date of Saturday, September twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Do we have the petitioner here? Counsel? Do we have a motion?
We need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion. Mr. Morgan?
You know, based on the recent information that was provided, I think that
Need a motion?
A motion, we'll have a motion to approve this.
Support.
The regular.
Right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Morgan, support by Toy. Council comments? Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, it does state here that it's on a cul-de-sac, so it seems if they're clearing off a cul-de-sac, hopefully all of the neighboring residents are participating in the in the activities of the day.
Councilmember Scheel?
So I just want to, we've tabled this a couple of times, right? Has our, can we, am I allowed to go to the council manager to find out? So have we talked to her, to the person who filled out the request?
She has been sent emails, and Jen has been mailed her home each time.
And she has not responded? Okay, so I will not be voting in favor of this because if if a representative or herself cannot make it here or send an email back to us to let us know what the situation is, that she works evenings, or there's a reason why she cannot do what we ask for this to be taking place. So that's my comments tonight.
Anyone else from council? Mr. Morgan?
To the city council manager, can you please try to reach out to this person and just figure out what's going on? I realize you sent emails and a letter or whatnot, but I don't know if they left a phone number or something, try to reach out to them, figure out what's going on. Thank you. I know it's a little bit out of protocol, but thank you.
Anyone else from council? And anyone from the, sorry, go ahead.
I just had a question. The chair, are we going forward with them with the approving? Are we going to wait and try calling?
Mr. Morgan's motion's still on the table.
Whether it's approved or denied, they can reapply if it's denied.
Anyone from the audience? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
No.
Vice President Tashnik?
No. And we are at a stalemate.
Well, ties, it doesn't pass.
Tie, so it's a tie. So it doesn't pass. We're at a three three. All right, we're going to now move on to new business. Number item number seventeen is to request a request to schedule a Finance and Budget Committee meeting and to establish a public hearing date. This comes to us from the Department of Finance for the annual budget for the fiscal year ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Madam President, I'll make an approving.
Support.
Go ahead.
We have a motion from Mr. Donavich, supported by Mrs. Bozinski.
Madam President, this is standard. We held a public hearing by charter to start the finance budget process every year, so this is a standard thing we do each year. Thank you.
And just so we're clear, the scheduled date would be Thursday, September eighteenth at seven P M. That is the proposed date for that. Anyone else from council? Anyone from the audience? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye, and the motion carries six nothing. All right, item agenda, agenda item, excuse me, number eighteen, a request to adopt a resolution calling for a public hearing. This is from the Plymouth Road Development Authority, the PRDA, to consider the adoption of an ordinance amending the district boundaries of the downtown district of the Plymouth Road Development Authority pursuant to Act fifty seven of the Public Acts of Michigan of twenty eighteen.
I'd like to offer an approving motion.
Support.
We have an approving from Councilmember Bozinski, supported by Mr. Donavich. Councilmember Bozinski, go ahead.
Yes, so I I talked with our planning director, Mark Termina, about this this afternoon. There are a lot of things related to Plymouth Road Development Authority that this public hearing would have an opportunity to present to council and the public as a whole for further debate and discussion. This motion here is just allowing us to schedule that meeting, so that's similar to what we did in our our last motion.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Audience, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye, and the motion carries six nothing. Agenda item number nineteen, this is a request to adopt a resolution calling for a public hearing. This is the Plymouth Road Development Authority to consider the adoption of an ordinance approving an amendment to the development plan and termination and adoption of a new tax increment finance plan pursuant to Act fifty seven of the Public Acts of Michigan of two thousand and eighteen.
I'd like to offer an approving motion.
Support.
Proof, a motion by Bozinski, support by Donavich. Councilmember?
This was, this is related to the previous motion. It would schedule a public hearing for proposals to be brought before council and the public as a whole for further discussion and debate at that time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Toy?
On these two, if I mention eighteen and nineteen, how will the business community that this is affecting be notified?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
The statute requires notices to be mailed to all property owners within the district. Notices will also be posted throughout the district, and there will also be two publications in the Detroit Legal News.
Great. Just just because, you know, when you're in retail and in business, a lot of times you get real busy and you don't have time to devote to sometimes even mail during the week, as Rob and his family knows. So you 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 don't want to miss this kind of thing going on because it affects our businesses on Plymouth Road. And this was put back for some good reasons, but a certain council member also sold these things to different cities, if I recall, and probably still does. So and and that that that'll be in my memory banks for a while, but that's okay. It has served us somewhat well, and hopefully it will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Audience?
Michelle Mancini again, Merriman Road. Is, and I don't know if you guys know the answer to this, but these plans have expiration date, and a lot of times, the only reason you're amending them is just because they're about to expire. And if you don't amend them, they will cease to exist, so it's probably what this is. The only thing I want to mention in advance when you're discussing it is if you're changing the boundaries in any way, any of the taxing authorities that you are getting money from, at that point, have the option of opting out. And so you, if you expand your boundaries, you might actually lose money in your recapture. So I just want to point that out when they're going through the plan. Be mindful of that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye, and the motion carries six nothing. Agenda item number twenty, a request to authorize payment to Wayne County for permanent highway and temporary grading easements. This comes to us from the Engineering Division regarding Newburgh Road reconstruction project, Ann Arbor Trail to Plymouth Road.
So moved.
Support.
Support. We have a motion by Toy, support by Bozinski. Councilmember Toy, are you good?
Yeah, I'm good to go.
Okay, we'll go to Mr. Zlinsik.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I appreciate you doing this on the agenda. As you know, we're trying to reconstruct Newburgh Road from Ann Arbor Trail to Plymouth Road. As you're aware, MDOTs started back on January sixth to do a twenty million dollar project. They previously paid ninety six thousand dollars to Wayne County Parks for grading easements for their for their work that they're conducting out there today. This is a requirement for us to get federal tax dollars that go to Washington, D.C., to take advantage of the federal funding. I don't want to lose one point three million dollars over forty thousand dollars. Again, working with Wayne County as part of their corporate council, this is a requirement for them to for allow us to go into Newburgh Road and provide a highway easement and a consent to grade on their property. So appreciate your assistance for us to move forward to, again, get this project obligated, and then next year, we'll be constructing the roadway, along with improving the traffic signals at Churchill High School, Plymouth Road, Hines, Ann Arbor Trail, and Seven Mile as part of this whole project, about two point three million dollars worth of improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. As someone who drives to Churchill every morning, it's been a fun project, let me just say. Does anyone have any other comments? Okay, seeing none, audience?
Denise Micah, Livonia, nearest Seven Mile. So is which stretch of Seven Mile are you talking about? Because I heard that since the mire is going in, they're not going to fix that road for a couple of years.
We're not, we're talking about Newburgh Road here.
Yeah, Newburgh.
I'm sorry, what?
This is not, this is not that project.
Oh, but he mentioned Seven Mile.
Newburgh.
Oh, okay, sorry. Never mind, okay.
I hate the road.
Who else? All right, seeing seeing no other communication, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye, and the motion carries six nothing. Agenda item number twenty one, this is a word of contract, comes to us from the Engineering Division for the twenty twenty five lane line marking program, Contract twenty five dash H. Counsel?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Toy, support by Morgan. Mr. Zlinsik?
Again, Madam President, or Madam Chair, this is just a formality. We went out to Mitten. There's only one bitter, basically one game in town BK contracting, as you're aware. Wayne County recently resurfaced from Middle Belt to almost past Merriman. They are able to stripe that as part of that for Wayne County. We're looking to utilize their services to help go out and do about a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars worth of work in the city, provide our lane line markings so it's clear in the fall, especially during the wintertime, to make sure that those lines are visible along school craft with recent patching, and also in the crosswalks for schools. If we have calls from the police officers or from the school or concerned residents to get those areas marked properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any comments from council? Audience? All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye, and the motion carries six nothing. And rounding it up, item twenty two, we have a request for additional appropriation and expenditure. This also comes to us from the Engineering Division regarding the twenty twenty five concrete maintenance and selective slab program. This is Contract twenty five dash J. Counsel?
Support.
Motion by Scheel, support by Bozinski. Councilmember Scheel, anything else?
Nope.
Nope, we'll go back to Mr. Zlinsik.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to let you know, we're just trying, again, we've been concentrating on focusing on doing the school craft service drive, eastern westbound. We were able to go from Yale to Brookfield this year. And again, our goal was to utilize the funding that we have within the three road programs. So appreciate your assistance, again, to get us past Farmington, Brookfield, and as you know, Wayne County is actually reservicing Farmington Road. We are very pleased with their efforts out there, as you can tell, from the school craft service drive, as as MDOTs doing the I ninety six and M fourteen project that gets off there. So hopefully we'll have a smoother transition for the truck traffic and people that travel that area, and look for your assistance to approve this to get Great Lakes their funding for their work completed.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Audience, seeing none, Madam Clerk? Oh, sorry. It's hard to see with the lights sometimes.
I guess I didn't pop up fast enough. Eileen McDonald, Livonia, Michigan. I know this project had been going on for a while, so I guess I'm just curious as to why the the additional funding wasn't requested while in advance of the the start of this project? Because this originally was approved for eight hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, and now they're asking for an additional five hundred and eighty four thousand dollars in appropriation to do this project. So maybe, I I don't know what, you know, what council's processes on that. And if the community would like to know, council agendas all have the attachments for their packets online under the agendas. So all this information is available for everybody to view. Thank you.
Madam Vice President, you? Mr. Donavich, go ahead.
Madam Vice President, the Engineering Department, these are normal requests. They they go out every year and identify areas that need to be reconstructed, whether that be on a general maintenance plan or emergencies that take place, water main replacements, things happen throughout the year. So this is very normal, that these additional expenditures come up for road replacement in our packet, which is available to the community. The additional cost and the amount of five hundred and eighty four thousand dollars was the result of quantities added when completing eastbound school craft road from Yale to Farmington and Farmington to Brookfield, along with the portion of westbound school craft from Farmington Road to Stark. So they plan, the Engineering Department does a great job when trying to identify these areas, as that construction happens, they find more areas, and there is budgeted funds to take care of these road replacement areas. And concrete's expensive, and roadwork is expensive, so this is normal, happens all the time, and we we budget for for these road replacements. And if it wasn't done this year, and unit pricing would be done in the following year, and the work is still there to be done. So thanks, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, now, Madam Clerk, if you could take the vote.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye, and the motion carries six nothing. All right, that concludes the regular agenda. Is there any audience communication that was not on the agenda?
Since James Hooper, Six Mile Road, you directed me to come back here at the end, so I will. This is regarding the questions that were brought up by Councilwoman Scheel regarding millages and the verbiage, the language of all the current millages in the city. You, I believe, asked the Finance Director to have a report on that. I would like to know if that has happened yet. Do we have the language for all of the millages, and will they be available in an easy-to-find way for the public to be to be able to review? So, you know, if you're interested, you wouldn't have to FOIA the city for the language. Thank you.
I can respond to that. We will be having, we have not received everything as of yet. We will be having a Finance and Budget Committee meeting, and at that time, I would expect that that should all be in the packet for that. That would be public and part of our public packet. All right, anybody else? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
I was just going to ask, can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion from Toy, supported by Scheel. We'll be back in ten minutes, so we'll just say right at nine o'clock.